Meeting to order. We will have the invocation that's going to be led by Pastor Jonathan Elmore of the Bridge Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Protem Pimentel. You could all please rise.
Just thank you for including us in this time. We're always honored to get to pray over this time, so thank you. But yeah, I'll open us in prayer. Dear God, thank you for the city of El Segundo. Lord, thank you for how you've given so much to us. And we just want to extend gratitude for what we have behind us and what we have before us, Lord. And God, I pray also just for our public servants, our firefighters, our police officers, our teachers, Lord, everyone that we interact with. Pray you give them wisdom, them discernment on the go in their job in different ways, Lord. And I also pray for here tonight that you give our public servants here wisdom, discernment as they make decisions, as they solve problems and process just new challenges, Lord. We thank you for this time. In your name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much Pastor Elmore, and thank you so much Mayor Protem Pimentel. Madam Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Baldino?
Here.
Councilmember Giroux?
Here.
Councilmember Persakir?
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Here.
Mayor Boyle?
Here.
All right, next up we have special presentations. I'll turn it over to City Manager Darryl George.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's really exciting to be able to make these introductions of two new key positions here in our city, our new Fire Chief and Chief Financial Officer. But before I introduce them, I do want to express my thanks and gratitude to the interim folks in those positions who served a significant amount of time. Our interim Fire Chief, Robert Espinosa, and interim Chief Financial Officer, David Kane, for really their stewardship, leadership, and really coming in and maintaining quality levels of service and leadership during the interim period. So a big thank you to them. Couldn't have done it without them. Okay, on to introductions. Firstly, I'd like to introduce to the council and the community our new Fire Chief, George Avery. George? Thank you, George. Really appreciate it. Yep, Chief Avery comes to us now with almost thirty years' experience in fire service. He started in the city of San Bernardino where he worked for twenty-six years, working his way through the ranks of Training Captain, Battalion Chief, Division Chief, Fire Marshal, and then ultimately to Fire Chief. Holds a bachelor's degree in public administration and has spent the last two years serving as the Fire Chief of the city of Brea. Comes to us with a lot of experience and a lot of technical know-how in this area. He's known for his collaborative leadership style and his focus on career mentorship, which is essential, as you know, to this position. So Chief Avery, welcome aboard. Looking forward to having you, and if you can say a few words, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. We have an amazing, beautiful city here in El Segundo. I'm so proud to have accepted that responsibility given to me by you to serve this city and this community. You have high-profile businesses, you have residences that just love this city, as I can tell, and you can tell. To be able to win the World Series for our Little League and watching the Rose Parade and watch them in the Rose Parade was phenomenal. I want to just thank the staff today who have really welcomed me, your department heads, with their incredible knowledge and expertise. I met with everyone in my fire department that were there today. You have incredible admin staff, fire prevention, and battalion chiefs and firefighters who are so committed to doing the best job they can and provide the best customer service for this city. So thank you for this honor, and we will do great things. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
And Chief, Councilmember Marty Simonoff from Brea said he's gonna, you're gonna be missed. So said great things about Marty Simonoff says he's bummed you got, you're leaving the city. So, yeah. All right, thank you very much and welcome.
Yes, thank you, Chief. And by the way, first day for both of these gentlemen, so pretty exciting. Okay, on to our Chief Financial Officer, Paul Chung. Paul comes with almost twenty years of experience in public finance, particularly municipal finance. He serves, he served in the public finance sector for four local Southern California municipalities, Calabasas, Santa Clarita, Santa Monica, and San Marino. Were in his most recent tenure as Finance Director for San Marino, which has been the last four years. He earned the city's first achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association and received five clean audits in the past five years. So we like to hear that. Thank you. He's, has vast financial experience at multiple levels and his natural ability to present complex financial data in layman's terms is one of his high points. Thank you, Paul. Looking forward to your expertise and leadership, and welcome aboard.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, City Manager, and Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. Thank you. It's really an honor, a privilege to be standing here before you. I know there's a lot of strategic planning and initiatives ahead of us, and I'm glad to be here, to be part of that, and looking forward to working with you, of course, and the community, and of course, the executive team, and my staff here with their support. It's been, it's been really great first day, and quite overwhelming, but also at the same time, exciting and thrilled to be looking forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, Paul, Paul comes to us with high recommendations from previous CFO, Joe Lilio. So he passes along those, those comments. So thanks again to both of our new department heads, and thank you, council. On with the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. George. Would you like to do a photo with him, the new, your new executives?
Together, all right. Together. Right over here, gentlemen. Stand over here. Absolutely. I want to get it today, first thing in the morning. All right. Very good. Hey, gentlemen, there we go. All right, perfect. Here we go. And one, two, and one more. Beautiful. Thank you.
All right, next up is Public Communications. Now is the time and place for Public Communications. Madam Clerk, how many cards do we have? Just one card. Okay, please proceed.
Cheryl Smith, please. Hello, my name is Cheryl Smith, and I am here to talk about item number seventeen, which is about parking permits and parking considerations. There's been a survey that's been done. I understand that Michael Allen is here to present about it. High regards from Michael Allen. Love him. He's great, as is the Public Works team. Just wanted to throw that out there. I just wanted to let you all know that we already have a parking permit that's in place on California Street. So just kind of keep that in mind as you're listening to the report. Also, back in July, I personally went around to the residents on Washington, Kansas Street, and the rest of California that does not have a parking permit, and received signatures from them indicating that they would also like a parking permit. So as all of this attests to, we do have a parking issue in our side of the neighborhood with regards to Ubers, local businesses parking on our streets. It's just very congested there. So as you listen to the report, I don't know what it says, but I'm assuming that our neighbors spoke up. I would ask that you please take all this into account, that we really do have a parking situation there, and we are looking for a resolution. We are hopeful that Public Works will present something at some time for your, for your consideration. And ideally, I do have to ask that it would be really nice to have a twenty-four-hour parking permit there. So just wanted to say that this is a valid concern, and if you have any questions, you can always reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. That's all we have for public comments. All right, and nothing really for you to follow up on, I don't believe, Darryl?
No, other than, as Ms. Smith said, item seventeen will be discussed further in the meeting agenda by Community Development Director, Michael Allen, for more discussion.
Thank you. Moving on to item A, procedural motions. Read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Do we have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Great. That was Giroux with the first. Do we have a second?
Baldino seconds.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, five zero. Consent. Any polls?
Thirteen, please, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Pimentel with pulling item thirteen. Any others? No. Okay, do we have a motion to approve items two through twelve? So moved?
Giroux moves. Baldino will second.
Couldn't tell who said that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, five zero. Okay, Mayor Protem.
Mr. Mayor, item thirteen is a resolution adopting the engineering plans and construction specifications for the Community Development Block Grant Library Park Pathway Improvement Project, project number PW twenty-three, tax seven. Our issue with this previously was the way that we thought improvements might change the flow of the park. In the name of ADA compliance, that would mean adding and removing different railings that we thought could be deleterious to how we do things like concert in the park. The reason I pulled this is there was no map that would show the schematics, and that was sort of the integral part before of railings that would be hidden by the hedges when you walk down to the flagpole. Would some of the slopes necessitate different, different railings and fences in the middle of the park? So Elias, if this will be, if this is in, in your bailiwick, if you could just walk us through a little bit of where, where these would be in place and what changes there would be?
Sure. So the, this staff report itself, it does make a reference to this item that previously it went before City Council, and the issue that the City Council had regarding, regarding those guardrails and the direction that was given. So we were able to eliminate the guardrails along the middle of the park, but there were a couple of spots by the sidewalk away from the park on the edges that we had to have those in order to make the ADA compliant. But all, all the others portions of, of the pathway that had railings, the railings were eliminated and the, and the slopes were redone. So it's in the body of the staff report. I'd be glad to forward a copy of the schematic, but the schematic would simply say what I'm, I'm saying.
Well, I think that was one of the integral pieces, and I think for people watching at home, to be able to accept the block grant means we're accepting, doing all the ADA compliance issues that come with it. And, and so part of that was, we just weren't certain where these improvements would be. So could, could you, I guess, in absence of having the schematic on the screen, I know it's not in the report, can, can you walk us through a little bit about where the rail, the railings are the principal issue?
So the only two portions where the guardrails had to, had to sustain was at the fringe of the park, the west of the gazebo, and the south, at the, at the south edge of the park, close to Mariposa Avenue sidewalk. And, and these are the only two locations. It is on the paragraph right before the discussion. So with the exception of these two sections, all the guardrails were eliminated.
Okay, so just those two, those two slopes, and principally, there's already guarded by hedges right now.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, that's, that, with that being the case, I'll move approval.
Thank you.
Great, we have a first, we have a second?
Sure. Baldino seconds.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, five zero. Thank you. No public hearings this evening. We have item fourteen, first reading of an ordinance amending El Segundo Municipal Code, Chapter one dash six Personnel Merit System to revise the title of Recreation Superintendent to Recreation Manager under the list of positions exempt from the civil service system. Updated classification specifications and examination plans for Building Safety Manager and Recreation Manager, and resolution to establish the basic salary range for the Recreation Manager. Mrs. Reddick?
I apologize for the very long title. Trying to be very descriptive and transparent. This item here tonight is really a housekeeping item. As you know, we have had manager-level positions become vacant, and as they become vacant, we have converted them to an at-will status outside of the civil service system. And last September, we brought an ordinance to the council to amend the positions in the municipal code, which were considered at-will. And with some of those in the list, they had an asterix next to them with a notation in the ordinance that says, once these become vacant, they will become at-will upon approval of the class spec from the City Council. So the two positions here is the Building and Safety Manager that has become vacant. So I'm bringing forward the class spec to update that. And then also the Recreation Superintendent has become vacant, so it's an update to the class spec and the title for that. And because the title is being changed to Recreation Manager, that also requires a salary resolution for countless purposes.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Reddick? Okay, none. All right, first is to introduce and waive the first reading of the proposed ordinance. City Attorney, would you please read that by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before the council is in ordinance amending El Segundo Municipal Code, Chapter one dash six Personnel Merit System to revise the title of the Recreation Superintendent to Recreation Manager under the list of positions exempt from the civil service system.
Thank you. We just need someone to introduce?
Correct.
Persik's in.
Okay, Persik is introducing that. It'll come back, second reading, February twenty, February?
February sixth.
Sixth, sorry. Yeah, okay. Thank you. And then next one is to adopt the updated classification specifications and examination plans for the newly vacated Building Safety Manager and Recreation Manager, and we need a motion to adopt that. Someone like to move approval? Thank you, Baldino.
Baldino will move. Pimentel second.
Okay, Baldino on the first, Pimentel on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No one opposed? Great. And then we need to adopt a resolution establishing the basic salary range for the Recreation Manager position. So Mr. Vasquez, if you could please read that.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a resolution establishing a basic monthly salary range for full-time job classifications before the City Council for consideration.
Great. We need a motion to approve, please?
Baldino so moves?
Great.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? That was Giroux, by the way.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Clunky vote, five zero nonetheless. Okay, that's it on item fourteen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, approve the purchase or authorize a lease-to-own agreement for a combination jet vacuum truck for the city's wastewater division, and Elias Sessino, Director of Public Works, is here to present.
Good evening again. As you know, this item before you, the cost of, of this vacuum truck is about six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And we came to the City Council last month, and the direction was for us to look at other options. So we did look at the other option, and the other option is a ten-year, a ten-year lease-to-own option with yearly payments of eighty-three thousand, six hundred dollars at the five-point-three-eight percent interest rate. So we did through, you know, we did go through the calculation, and this option ultimately is going to cost the city about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars worth of, if you would, financing, basically. At the request of the city manager, we looked at a five-year rather than ten-year lease-to-own option. And under, under the five-year lease-to-own option, the yearly payments rose to be about a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. The interest rate about the same. And, and when we went through the calculation, that alternative, the five-year option, would cost the city about sixty-one thousand dollar worth of, of financing. So actually, there are three options on the, on the floor. The first option is to just purchase right out, which doesn't cost the city any financing money. The second option is a ten-year lease-to-own option with yearly payments of about fifty, about eighty-three thousand, six hundred, which would cost the city about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And the third option is a five-year lease-to-own with yearly payments of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, which would cost the city ultimately about sixty-one thousand dollar worth of financing.
Thank you for exploring that five-year option. What was the interest rate on the five-year term?
Five-point-three-eight percent.
So, and the other one was how much?
The same, five-point-three-eight. I know.
Why are they giving, it's less risk?
I know, because last time, the five-point-three-eight was that, that interest rate was given to us about two or three weeks ago. The interest rates are going up, so when we called today, it went up just a slightly.
Happens to be exactly the same, it's five to ten?
Yes.
Okay. I, well, I took liberty of reaching out to the City Treasurer and just asking him what the, what our discount rate is, what we're getting on our investments, which is roughly about five percent in the next five years, going on to maybe four, four percent years, six through ten. And so for me, I would like to, this is my personal opinion, is why I asked that we actually look at a loan, is to use that capital elsewhere, either put it to work with his office, or use it for these capital improvement projects that we know we have tens of millions of dollars where shortfall. And I think it makes good financial sense. So that's, that's my opinion.
Are these restricted funds that we're using to buy this jet vacuum truck with?
So there is two-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand, I believe, two-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-seven-hundred, which is already in the equipment replacement.
Right.
Should the city decide to do the first option, which is cash right out, then the, the balance, which is about three-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-dollar, will come from the wastewater enterprise fund, which are restricted funds, which only could be used for sanitary sewer-related projects. So you cannot use those funds to do, for example, the plunge. You only have to do anything that is related to wastewater.
But you can invest them, and I think, right?
Yes.
Aren't the enterprise funds in?
That's correct. You could still invest that. It earns, it earns interest if the money is not, is not spent.
Well, my, my two cents is, if we have the money, why finance it? I would say, since our last truck is now over ten years old and is basically unusable, that we definitely not enter to a ten-year lease, because we're paying for something who knows in eight, nine years if it's going to be valuable anymore. So I would either pay it outright or do the shorter five-year term, but if we have the funds, I don't know why we're.
The truck we have is twenty years old, forgive me.
Twenty years old? My goodness.
Sorry.
Well, then this one should last fifteen.
Yes, it should.
Thank you, Councilmember Baldino. Any other thoughts?
So with the funds being in the, in the water, the water restriction account, can we actually use that money and put them in investments, or are we restricted on what investments we can do with that money?
My understanding is that as these funds are not spent, they, they earn interest. They earn interest of about three to five percent roughly, because no one could predict what interest we'll earn next year, because we are just estimating. So that's how it works. But the funds, if you want to spend the funds, it has to be only related to wastewater-related projects. I don't know if I explained that properly.
Well, no, but I'm just wondering, is the Department able to invest then in their portfolio, or are they invested in just smaller, like, you know, restricted, restricted investments? Like, how does it, does it lump together, or they just have to manage those separately?
I defer to.
Madam Councilmember?
I just don't want to, I just don't want to create a lot of extra investment work.
It should be part of the whole portfolio of investments that the City Treasurer will do in behalf of the city.
Wouldn't be have something extra that you're going to have to manage? Okay.
But those investments and that return goes back into Water Department uses.
Right, right.
You can't just take it and say, oh, we've got free money, and we're going to spend it on the fields or something like that.
Right, right.
The, as, as is shown on the staff report, the existing unrestricted fund balance for the wastewater is about five-point-four million, just so that you know. It's shown on the staff report. Yeah, five-point-four million.
So if I'm, we're paying five-point-three-eight percent, and then we're saying that if we stick it into our investments, we could maybe get four to five percent? and then we're saying that if we stick it into our investments, we could maybe get 4% to 5%. So I, I, but you're still upside down no matter how you look at it. So my point is that if it's coming out of these funds, why finance it? If, if, we, one thing, if the, if the interest rate was about 3% or 4% and we were getting, and it was upside, it was the other way around, but I don't get the idea of, of financing something that we have the cash for. Because it's a depreciable asset and the thing deteriorate, it'll depreciate 30% soon as you drive it off the lot. We don't know what's going to happen with water and sewer. We could have some catastrophic failure. Just in our consensus, in our consent report, we know we have major improvements that need to be made, need to be made in pumps and everything else. We would have to, if we, we didn't have to tap into reserves or borrow money if we're going to have an issue where we didn't have enough money in our enterprise fund. And this is something that we can borrow money for, we're going to be at parity. I don't know why we would take $600,000 of the city's money and pay cash for a depreciable asset that we can borrow and break even, maybe even do better over a five-year term. It's just.
But you're not going to break even over a five-year term. You just, it's, you have a depreciable asset and now you're paying $61,000 more than you were, that the price tag just went up, right? I just want to, and I'm just trying to follow along with you, that's all. So I, I, for me, I, I don't believe that we should be financing this. And you just said the wastewater fund, enterprise fund, has $5.4 million in it?
Yes, sir. The balance, the existing balance, unrestricted.
So which would go down to $5.1 million?
No, because we have to use some of our general fund for this, as nobody said.
No, no, sir. The difference, the 291,700, we have that amount in the equipment replacement funds already. So, yeah, the delta comes out of the wastewater.
So none of this comes out of the general fund?
That is correct.
Well, I'm not going to die on the sword on this one. Let's just get to a vote.
I mean, look, I would, I would rather. I would rather, I would rather finance it because we're going to, I mean, we will inflate our way past the, past the 5% carry on this. I mean, if we grow our economy in 10 years, by 3%, we'll have made our money back.
Carol.
I'm actually, think we should finance it for five years.
All right. I'm going to move approval that we finance it for five years after going back to the vendor and get a better term than 5.38. They can do, they can sharpen the pencil on that one.
We will try.
I think that was just a knee-jerk reaction the same day as a council meeting.
Sure. We'll do our best to get a better rate.
Thank you.
Do you need more coaching on the negotiation? We've got lots of cooks for this kitchen. We'll just.
I take any coaching you'd like to offer me. I'm not that great in negoti, well, actually, I've got a few years.
I will second the motion.
All right. Any other, yes.
And the only reason, I mean, we can, we move it, move forward and then I'll make my statement. Go ahead.
Yeah, this for the, finish for the five-year term.
Okay.
The mayor was the first. I got the second.
Hold on, was there?
No, I'll say it after.
Okay. Any other comments?
It's a signing statement?
Okay. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
I was opposed.
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 3-2. Okay.
The one thing I was going to mention, you know, because I know we were talking about the parks and recs and we're looking at the pump station there, because we want to redo those fields and that pump station is something we need to eventually look at. And that's going to take a chunk of change to do that, right? How much, how much money would that pump station on, on?
The field that the city council has given us direction.
Is to not touch that pump station?
Yeah, it does not touch that.
I know, but we will probably need to be doing that pump station in the, in the near future.
So, yes, what we have planned to do with, I believe you referred to pump station number, I think either 16 or 18 by, by the fields. So the, the, the engines and the motors could be upgraded. And also, we could, we could have some dry wells in the field that would help us with the amount of water that is now being stored in the, in the event of, of big rains. So that's the way, that's the way to deal with that.
And how much would that?
It's.
The upgrade on those motors, how much would that be?
It would be several million dollars because it's not going to be cheap.
That's what I thought. That's, that's one of the reasons why I was thinking we should, because we, I know that's coming.
Thank you, Councilor Persick. Thank you, Mr. Sassino.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Item 16, annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. Our new CFO, Mr. Chung.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, City Council members. About 10 hours ago, I was told that I had a staff report tonight for you. But we do have our head auditor, CLA, with us tonight on Zoom, which will be presenting the main report tonight. I do want to commend the finance department. I can't take any credit that this is the third year in a row that had a clean audit. So I really want to commend Vicky and Dino and the finance department for their great job there. I was also informed that it took six months or less to do the audit. Typically, it takes a long time, especially the size of the city. So really, that was a great sign that everything's looking really great on the financial side. So really wanted to commend the finance department for their work there. With that said, I will turn it over to Tiffany from CLA for their presentation for you.
So you realize now this is like the bar is set pretty high.
I, I like it when the bar is high. I like to hit a high bar, so thank you. Tiffany, are you ready for us?
Yes. Hi, good evening. Can you guys hear me? Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we could hear you, Tiffany.
We can hear you.
All right. Let me share my screen so we can go through my presentation. All right. All right, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for allowing me to attend the meeting through Zoom. Again, I am Tiffany Fung. I'm a signing director with CLA and I manage this audit. So I'll make a short presentation on the results of the audit and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. So the scope of our services for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023, was to audit the city's annual financial statements in accordance with the auditing standards generally accepted in the United States as well as government auditing standards. We were also engaged to perform a single audit of the city's federal grant expenditures under the uniform guidance. In addition, we performed agreed-upon procedures on the calculation of the city's GAAN appropriation limits and we compiled the city's state controllers report. So for the audit of the city's financial statements, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion. We believe the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position and changes in financial position of the city as of June 30th, 2023. We believe the audit evidence that we have obtained is sufficient and appropriate for us to provide a basis for our audit opinion. So we reported a change in accounting principle this year as the city was required to implement GASB 96 on subscription-based information technology arrangements as well as GASB 94 on public-private and public-public partnerships as of the beginning of the fiscal year, July 1st, 2022. So our opinions were not modified with respect to these matters. The auditor's report also states that management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. And our responsibility as the auditors is to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatements. And then lastly, in accordance with government auditing standards, we have also issued a report on our consideration of the city's internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. The purpose of that report is to describe the scope of the testing and not to provide an opinion on the effectiveness of the city's internal controls. For this, for this year, we did not have any internal control or compliance findings. For the single audit of the city's federal grants, we also issued an unmodified opinion, which means in our opinion, the city has complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements that could have a direct and material effect on the city's major federal programs. So we've also issued a letter to the council at the conclusion of our audits, which I will summarize. The letter states that management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting principles, which are described in Note 1 to the financial statements. Accounting estimates are an integral part of the financial statements and they are determined by management. The most sensitive estimates reported on the financial statements include the information related to the city's pension and other post-employment benefit plans, as well as the city's claims payable liability. We have reviewed and determined that these estimates were reasonable in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole. So we did not encounter any significant difficulties during the audit. We did not have any disagreements with management. There were no uncorrected misstatements. We did not have any audit adjustments. Management has made certain representations to us in a representation letter dated December 26, 2023, related to the audit. And then lastly, to our knowledge, management did not consult with other accountants regarding auditing and accounting matters. And that concludes my presentation, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So just to summarize, the, the fact that there were no findings is what we want to hear when we have an audit, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
This was the result we wanted to get when we started the process, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you so much. And I think it's interesting to note that in 2016, we probably, you guys were here, I think, weren't you? We had a lot back then, didn't we? So you've come a long way. I remember getting those reports and there were significant findings, so to speak. And you guys have done a great job getting everything squared away, so thank you. Is there anything worth, go ahead, Councilor Persick.
And it's important to note too, it's really good that we, and thanks to the team for having an amazing audit, because we are going to be embarking on a new enterprise system. You know, and so it's good that we have all of our, everything, everything clean so that when we go into the transition to the new enterprise system, there's, we're not, we're not going to find a bunch of mess. So thank you to this team for being diligent and making sure everything's clean from a finance perspective, because now we're ready to embark on that new enterprise system.
Yeah, there's, in the footnotes, way down below, like, very bottom, there were, I think, one, there was an error in headcount, I believe, right? Did you get any resolution on that one, Carol?
Yes, and I, I know I asked staff, after a one-on-one, you had, you noticed that there was an increase in like 100 FTEs.
425 or something.
Right, and, and, and it was, it was called community and cultural. And I think, Vicky, did you give me an answer? Can you address that one?
Yeah. That includes all the Red Park Library and El Segundo Media. So that's the category for that. And also that's for part-time employee. Sometimes part-time employee is only for special program, but they stay as active and actually they don't work at that time, but their headcount was included. Yeah, so.
But were they included years past? Because it was a big delta from last year to this year in terms of, it's over a 100-person increase.
Maybe after pandemic, a lot of programs got picked up and we hired a lot of part-time employee, like for Red Park program.
I just can't remember having us have that many employees since late 90s. I just, I'm still struggling with that number, but.
Yeah, no, we looked at it. It was not, not a typo, but it, it was, they, they think in terms of the uptick, considerable uptick post-COVID with the hiring of part-timers.
It can't be FTEs then. There's no way we have 400 and something FTEs in the city.
It was, it was part-timers.
Okay, but, okay.
Mostly part-timers.
It's just, it's not apples to apples over the years when I look at the numbers.
When I look, yes, Mayor.
It goes like that.
Yes, you're absolutely right. It's not 100 FTEs. These are as of June 30th, when we closed the fiscal year. We look at who's active in the payroll system, basically. And that's the conversation I had with our team. And so it's not really an apples to apples compared to, let's say, the budget book, which I was looking at the budget book to make sure, could we possibly see 100 increase in FTE? That wasn't the case. We did see an increase in FTE in community services department, I believe that. But not to the degree of 100. It's just.
It was, what was in our payroll system or HRS not necessarily was active at the time?
At, seasonal being that there's a lot of part-timers that get hired during the season. At that June 30th, when we took that data out, we probably had a lot of active employees at that system. We didn't terminate them, being that next year, they might come back on board. So that's probably why that number is high. But we did make sure, and I looked at it, to make sure that we've been reporting consistently that same information, meaning June 30th, did we do that last year and the previous years to that? And it's true that that's how we pull that data.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, any other questions or comments?
Great work.
Great job, team. I think, is this one a, is this one a, yeah, receive and file, so. Outstanding. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Tiffany.
All right. Item 17, residential on-street parking survey results and recommendations. Mr. Allen, our director of building and planning.
Community development.
Community development, sorry. You just got a promotion.
That depends on how you look at it. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Not intended to be a long presentation tonight, very high-level discussion. I'm going to report out on some survey results from a citywide, that is residential citywide, not everything west of PCH and north of Grand, essentially, oh, north of Franklin. Citywide survey that was conducted in order to garner opinion, feedback from the resident population as it relates to on-street parking. The way that this came about emanated from the couple of times that Public Works and Community Development have come before council to bring the two current active parking districts that, that exist today. Over the last couple of years, there's been discussion, oh, why don't we look at this more holistically? When we adopt one parking district, how do we know how it's impacting its neighboring streets that don't have a parking district? So to initiate that, that, you know, diving into that, that question, we conducted this citywide or residential citywide survey. And so tonight, I'm here to report out the, the response to that survey as well as seek some, some general direction from council. I will preempt that if we start to get into specific discussion on neighborhoods, which any of the five of you might live in, we'll have to dance around, maybe recusing oneself. But ideally, we're staying at a very high level, giving general direction. And you'll see as the presentation moves forward or progresses, we do, we do hone in on one particular corner of the city, of which I don't believe any of you are conflicted out. So I will begin with, there are two provincial parking districts today. One is on California Street, Maple, Sycamore, Walnut and Washington, which is within the sort of northeastern side of the residential pocket of the city. The second is along California, Holly and the west side of Kansas Street, which is sort of the southeastern pocket of the residential community. We can look at those in a little bit as well. What we did, and this was not a forced survey, but we, we did distribute it citywide. So anybody could have participated, anybody that had the active link that we pushed out through social media. Anyone who lived, worked, frequent, you know, the city or had access to it, could have taken the survey. But what we did was we, we showed up at the farmer's market, the city hall pop-up events. We pushed it out through any other community meetings that we might have had. And I'll give a, a huge thanks to Cheryl, our, our resident partners in, in one side of the community who helped really advocate pushing the survey out there and getting participation through, through those residents as well. The, the city ran for a little bit over two months here. When we got a total of 1,350 some odd responses, which we thought was, was pretty successful. Generally, when we've done community outreach for the downtown specific plan, Smokey Hollow, and we did any survey, we might have gotten 100 or 150 responses. And so I saw this and thought, whenever we do a survey, let's put parking on it, because that will generate a, a pretty decent return. Staying pretty high level, what we saw was that most, or at least two-thirds of the community, felt that, that they're able to park all their cars in their neighborhood without, without any problems. There, this raises other questions, what quantifies or what qualifies as somebody's neighborhood? And how many vehicles does that mean? We, we didn't really dive into the weeds there. But, but in general, we see that, that at least two-thirds of the respondents found that, that they could park their cars in their neighborhood. And there was a pretty even split citywide, whether or not they, you know, And there was a pretty even split citywide, whether or not they, you know, the, the participants favored a parking program being implemented in the neighborhood or not. There's not a clear delineation. There's a lot of, there's, you know, thirty six percent no with the nine percent. So over forty percent are a no or somewhat no. And then the, the other, the remaining fifty plus percent are yes, or yes with flexibility. And so it doesn't, it's not leaning heavily citywide, one way or the other. When we asked how many vehicles, some, some questions we just asked because we thought it would provide good context and good information for us to understand our community. We asked how many vehicles generally folks own, and we saw most own or two, two or more cars per household. And we also found that most folks, looking at this chart on the right, roughly two thirds of the city can park all of their cars on their subject property, whether that be a carport, driveway, garage. They can accommodate all their, their cars on their property. About a third of the community cannot, which means they're parking in the street. Also, at a high level, what we found, so this is color coded in two ways. The first, the, the written text, the percentages, the blue number represents those who responded, who were generally satisfied with their parking in their neighborhood. The red, those who were dissatisfied with parking in their neighborhood. The, the red, yellow and green is generally the red, the, the southeast corner of the city shows where there's a preponderance, or at least in this case, sixty percent of those residents in that neighborhood felt that they were dissatisfied with parking in the neighborhood. Yellow is where there was ten or less percent margin in between. And green was, there was a greater than ten percent margin of those who were satisfied with parking in their neighborhood. Just very sort of wide lens here. We can see that overall, parking along the perimeters of our residential neighborhood seems to be a growing concern or growing issue, and currently, a significant issue within the Holly Kansas Park or, or neighbor, residential neighborhood. When we, when we did this, it, it made a lot of sense to sort of hone in on, on Zone N, which is that, that neighborhood in the Holly Kansas neighborhood, to find out what's really going on there or, or where, where the stats lie there. And so I believe none of you are conflicted out of this neighborhood, and so I think we can have a little more detailed conversation here. But in Zone N, we found that, that majority of residents felt that they favored a parking district. When we asked whether there was a difference on weekends or weekdays, we found that weekends were not really an issue, it was weekdays that were an issue. And so all these questions help us understand what type of pilot, or what type of parking program to implement. When we asked what specific concerns we wished, they wished a parking program would solve, this is a fancy word cloud that we got, but, but it is very telling that, that the issues that that corner pocket of the city face are people who work in the area and park in their streets, the business community, the LAX traffic, ALOFT, the, the hotels, the office, that's like BizHow, which is, which is close by. A lot of folks are visiting these locations, they don't have parking on their properties, and so they're occupying the street parking. The Uber, the Turo, which is the car rental agency. And so this also tells us, you know, what, what, if we were to develop a parking program, what type of uses or what type of users are we trying to limit or prohibit in, in this residential area? In general, the key findings that we found through the feedback that we got by the survey included things like poor parking etiquette, you know, people are taking up space that could otherwise be occupied by two vehicles. The reason why that happens is generally, there's not marking on the street delineating actual parking stalls. So in some parts of the city, you'll, you'll see that parking stalls are delineated every twenty feet, you'll see the T mark. And that generally helps people maintain good parking etiquette, so there's areas where that doesn't exist. We, we have conflicting schedules, so street sweeping and trash pickup, you know, that, that creates conflict. Primarily, street sweeping because you cannot actually park in the street on those hours. Travelers going to LAX or hotels who, who take Uber or use the ride share or the Turo dot com, which is the, the car rental share program. And just general unawareness of other parking options, you know, one of the questions we asked of the residents were, if they were aware that you could park in the city owned parking lots overnight, and the vast majority answered no. We, we, we saw a, a preponderance of respondents who were completely unaware that they could park in city park, or city parking lots overnight. That's one night at a time, that does not allow you to leave your car there over more than that night. But, but this, there's an educational campaign that needs to happen here for, for those types of scenarios. So some of the recommendations we have, and as a preempt to Public Works, they, there is a existing current petition that is being evaluated in Zone N. Those residents have mobilized, they submitted a petition, so Public Works is in the midst of wrapping up their analysis, but we felt it important to wrap up this survey and come with some of this information before Public Works comes to the, the body and, and makes their recommendations for Zone N. But we believe that, and once Public Works makes their presentation, we believe that there, it's worth looking at a parking program or parking permit program in, in Zone N, if not entirety, within portions of it. And Public Works will come before council in the next month or so and report out the specific areas of Zone N in addition to the existing area that, that warrants a parking zone. We believe that citywide, probably, it would be helpful to stripe on-street parking stalls, review and revise street sweeping schedules, increase enforcement, which is a resource request. We don't have a, a robust enforcement arm of, of the city, and so that may be a, a resource request that comes down the pipeline, either through Community Development or PD who currently do parking enforcement. As I mentioned earlier, an education campaign, as well as additional signage regarding the seventy two hour. What can people do? How do we mitigate that, which also goes hand in hand in mitigation? Frequently, what happens is, and you'll see if you look at the feedback, somebody calls PD for seventy two hour enforcement. Car might have been there for a couple of days already, but they go out there and mark the tires, then they come back three days later. And so you've already, they've already been out there three, four, five days before, before actual any enforcement action is taken. And so it's, it's not a big disincentive for, for those folks to, to park their cars for over three days. And of course, encourage more bike and neighborhood electric vehicle usage. Some of the longer term goals, we could expand preferential parking. I don't think, this, this map currently doesn't show that parking is impacted in a dramatic way elsewhere in the city, but I don't, I don't think it's a far stretch to say, once we, once we adopt parking regulations in one neighborhood, there will be parking impacts that overflow into others. Right now, there's probably not enough data or enough support to look further into citywide or more robust parking programs. But I, I think that we will have to tackle it as it, as it comes, which is what we've been doing. We just didn't know the breadth of, of whether or not it existed anywhere else in the city. But it, it will require us looking at it continuously. As we adopt more parking districts, it's going to continue to become a need elsewhere in the city. And so unfortunately, it's not something that we can do as holistically as we, we had hoped. Additional reliance on public transportation and educational campaigns about that. And a very long term goal is, is construct additional parking lots or, or garages. This is a very, very high level ATP, their active transportation program is a campaign on, on, you know, using anything and everything but personal vehicles. These are things that we should do through our entitlements, and, and we will continue to do it as, as projects are brought before Planning Commission and City Council. ATP program is, is something that, that we will advocate through our entitlement and, and when developments come, come to town. So with that, tonight, just primarily receive and file, but secondarily, any general direction as it relates to any of these recommendations for CDD or Public Works to work on collectively, as well as just a primer for Public Works in the next month or so to come before you, specifically talking about Zone N. With that, I'd like to thank Agnes, my management analyst, who really took the lead on this and worked with Barbara and, and her shop, Diane, who, who let us use our Qualtrac survey, which also produces our net promoter score, and so that became a very handy tool that, that we will use moving forward to get better public engagement. So thank you Barbara and her team, and, and Agnes, and Cheryl, did she leave? Oh, she's right here, and Cheryl and her, her colleagues next door to her. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or discuss.
I just have one, it was kind of interesting on the number of cars, and there was only one person that had no car. I don't know if anyone noticed that. But the one thing that I think it's real important that we really need to get a handle on is the enforcement. Because I know we talked about this in regards to the library and the enforcement of, and the main street and around, you know, the Smokey Hollow area, that are we enforcing our current existing laws? And I think we need to have a, a, a solu, come up with a solution where, where does that sit? And does that sit, continue to sit into the police department, or does it go into code enforcement, and do we hire somebody to do that? Because I know in other cities, the beach cities, they actually, they gain a profit by managing their code enforcement of their, of their parking. So I just want to, I, I think it's something we're getting to a point where we as a council need to make a, a decision that if we want to embrace that and move forward with enforcing our current existing stated laws or policies.
I, I would ask, there's certainly an efficiency gain to doing a form of striping that sort of helps people more efficiently park. My concern on that is that I don't know that I've seen a residential area ever with parallel park striping. And I don't know how aesthetically pleasing that would be. So I guess I, I would put this to you on the community development side. Is there a, is there an area that has that, 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 I mean, certainly, there's a lot to be gained by parking efficiency and, and, and sort of directing people subtly and guiding them where, how, how many cars they can fit into a given spot? But it just, it, my concern is it just looks so terrible. I, I don't know if there's any spot, any place that has it, that's not on a thoroughfare.
Yeah, I think you're right. It's, it's more common in commercial or, or relatively far more urban locations. We're pretty urban in Southern California, but this is not, I think not what you picture when you think about those thoroughfares or the, the corridors. I'll, I'll have to look, and Elias and I can, can look. I, I definitely have seen it, but not in a, a more suburban setting. You certainly don't see it because you don't have the parking impact as you do in some of these pockets. But maybe we can find some examples before we ever made a decision on that. Take some photos and, and see what it, if it really has that type of visual impact that you're imagining.
Yeah, if there's a way to do it so it's not giant gaudy white stripes, you know, perpendicular to the road. I think though, that we all probably knew what we're getting into when we started the, the, and I think probably nineteen eighty five, when they, they put in that you could petition for permit parking, that it becomes a, a bit of a domino till, till you sort of run out of, out of the problem. So, so eventually, this will be approved, but I, I think that we'll be cascading, you know, westbound into the, to probably most of the way to Center Street eventually.
So my general observation is that the areas impacted are those closest to PCH. I'm imagining it's because of workers, employees of those establishments are parking in the residential. That's also where I would park if I was going to the airport and picking up an Uber, I would go somewhere closer to PCH. We can't ignore the fact that Pacific Coast Commons has been permitted and will come online on PCH, which will add more housing. So any solution, you're spitballing around, I would not limit to just that southern quarter. Because if you have parking permits there, and then you have PCH come on, which I believe gave some money to the city to deal with some type of parking permit or do an analysis of parking in that area. To the extent we can, I'd like to see some type of wholesale approach to how do we deal with more, creating more residential parking closer to PCH, because I think Chris is right. Once we do that, cars will move more towards the center of town, and then we're just kind of chasing, chasing the problem around, so. One thing I do want to point out, there's never been any suggestion by the city that we would collect a fee for a parking permit for residents, right? No, we asked the question whether residents would be willing to pay a fee, and I, I don't think we got a surprising answer. Most, actually, there was a fair, I don't, I don't have it right in front of me, but a lot of people said that they would, but I, I, you know, a surprise, an unsurprising majority didn't want to pay a fee.
Right, right, so that's. It looked like Russian election results.
Right, right, so I, I do want to thank everyone who submitted a response to the survey. All of the comments have been provided to council, very entertaining. But there, there is no, like, if we do parking permits, there will be a fee. There can be a situation where you show up with proof of residency and hear your permits, and then that's that. That's right. Okay, but again, this, the very beginning stages of something that's going to be teased out through hopefully some more public communication and comment. Yeah, this, this truly was just to get a baseline understanding of our citywide, you know, parking situation. And I, I think that this was intended to point us in a direction, at least initially. And I, I think we have that direction where we need to focus on. The next steps would be if there ever is a fee, you know, fee component to it, what, what the enforcement looks like. How vast do we make a parking district? But we, we have two small parking districts now, and I think currently, at least with Public Works, we're only talking about a, a portion of, of the neighborhood N, for lack of a better term here. And I think to your point, there's, there may be a, a need to look north of, of Area N because of PCC.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's a coincidence that the two parking permits we have now are between Center Street and PCH.
Question for you, so I see on this slide that you have the percentages of dissatisfied versus satisfied per, per zone. You had one thousand three hundred and fifty seven, it was a five hundred and thirty seven respondents. You had, you had almost, was it thirteen hundred?
Yeah, thirteen hundred and fifty.
How many of them came from Zone N? Was it?
It was, it was about one seventy five or so.
So out of, out of a thousand, out of thirteen hundred, only a hundred and seventy five came out of N?
Yeah.
All right, well, so there it was. I thought you gamed the system, but you didn't. That's good.
We, I, I didn't put this graphic up there.
Cheryl, behind your mask, I see you smirking. You knew where I was going with that, didn't you? Oh, no, that's good. That, that's good information, then. That's, that's, one of the things of surveys is that sometimes they can, they can easily be gamed, and, and it's difficult to be able to understand that. So thank you for going beneath the numbers there and, and giving us that, so, thank you.
So Area N is moving forward? They already have a, you said they have a.
Well, yeah, so there's already two petitions which are adjacent to each other in Area N, and Public Works is wrapping up their analysis and, and plan on coming to council in the next month.
So it'd be similar to the approach we took for California back, okay, or, yeah.
So if, so that's, we already have two, and then there's two more positions.
Just those two. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have two existing, and then two more that's on the table.
That's correct.
So it would be four if they got approved.
It's possible, I, and I don't know if this the ca, this is the case, but those two are so close that it could be combined, but I think we're still.
So, but we still haven't addressed, though, the issue of enforcement of those, right? So you can put as many signs up as you want, but if you're not enforcing it. And so I, I guess I, I want some, if, if we could, where, how do we, how do we move along that conversation about enforcement and, you know, what's, what, where should that enforcement be? Can we hire someone specifically just to ride around and give tickets? You know, a meet or make kind of program, but how do we move forward with that type of program?
Yeah, I, I think Daryl and, and Chief Bermudez and I probably need to sit down and talk. It's currently in, in PD's shop. And, and so we need to strategize. It could be a combination of, of efforts, but it, there certainly needs to be a, a more consistent enforcement mechanism, and not just this, but.
But overall, like the library, because there's some issue with the library parking, with the students, you know, downtown, there's a lot of, when you talk to people, a lot of people park there for eight hours on Main Street. There's no enforcement of the current existing laws. And we can't say that we have a parking problem when you're not enforcing what you already have established.
That's a fair point.
Okay, so we're good, right?
Yeah, I think we have, we have good direction.
Just as long as we could, in the next couple, you know, maybe in a couple of months or in a month, bring back a solution or suggestion for parking code enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. City Clerk, any reports this evening?
Yeah, just a quick reminder, presidential primary election's coming up in March, March of it. And so I just want to let everybody know that the library is going to be a four, four day vote center. I'm going to get this out now, since we don't meet again until like February sixth. But the ballot box opens on February first. But the ballot box opens on February 1st, so everyone, and your vote-by-mail ballot should be coming out around the 4th of February. Um, but back to the library, we're going back to the library this year for a vote center and it'll be March 2nd through the 4th, and then of course the day of the election. With better parking and it's just like kind of a better situation there than the teen center. Anyways, um, but of course, as usual, if anybody has questions, they can contact our office because we support that even though it's not our election.
Alright, thank you, Madam Clerk. City Treasurer is not here, Councilor Baldino.
Yes, this Thursday, Hyperion is having its community meeting at our library in person, 6 o'clock. If you have questions about Hyperion and the repairs, I hope to see you there at the library, 6 o'clock, thanks.
Thank you, sir, Councilor Drew.
Nothing from me, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Perstak.
Yeah, I just wanted to give recognition to the, um, Community Services Department, I never can say that, and, um, for their, um, senior luncheon that they did on Christmas Eve. And thank you to, um, Tracy Weaver's mom for initiating that program many, many years ago, Chris Sherrill. It was a great, um, event where we invited all the seniors to come to have a turkey dinner on Christmas Eve. And then I think we distributed about 50 home deliveries that day. So, um, thank you to that team and the ro, and the Rotary for helping facilitate that as well.
Thank you, Councilor Perstak, Mayor Protem, and so.
Mr. Mayor, we have sanitation meeting tomorrow and the sanitation personnel committee will meet the following week to begin, uh, collective bargaining, always fun. Transportation at the COG level was dark, uh, this month, uh, deferring the, there was nothing to talk about because the metro presentation was not yet out for, uh, the Green Line extension. Uh, the COG had their legislative briefing. I think there was a, a lot of things that, uh, at, at the state level, um, are somewhat more interesting to governance than they are to the populace. I think what we were a little surprised by was the lack of interest, not lack of interest, the lack of execution at the state level on taking action for electric bike regulation. Um, we had hoped to hear some feedback on some planning around that. I know many residents are concerned about it. As a sort of collective group of municipalities, we had largely been deferring to the state to take collective action. They're concerned about being duplicative or expanding the DMV to have to have overset of bicycles. Um, so I, I'm not sure where that leads us. I think a lot of us were somewhat gassed at the lack of action from them on that. Uh, county homelessness meeting will go this week, as will the age and place piece and a strategic priority for us. So we'll learn a little bit about how those efforts are being restarted for aging in place. Uh, and then there's forum in the South Bay for candidates for the district attorney's office to include the incumbent, uh, that was on Saturday. Uh, certainly some fireworks there, there was, right now the field I think is still at seven. I think it, it looked from my, uh, my, there's probably three to four to come out of that, sort of as a first pass. Um, and we certainly have candidates who are interested in coming to address us, so, so we'll see about that. Uh, we'll be hosting, we, not we, the city, but the city will have, uh, a venture capital based hackathon in conjunction with the Department of Defense over President's Day weekend. Um, that's exciting, probably 200 to 300 young programmers and college students coming in to try and solve some, some detailed technical problems, uh, in, in a sample environment for the Department of Defense. Um, and that's all.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. Uh, big news for Inglewood, I don't know if you guys saw, but they got their Inglewood Transit Corridor approved, which is major for them, significant for us because it connects to the metro. We wrote her a letter, we wrote a letter of support years ago for that and I congratulated Mayor Butt on her behalf. At the regional council meeting for SCAG, I think the most significant thing at the last meeting, which was last week, was that SCAG is sponsoring two Reno reform bills. And specifically these are looking at how does the HCD work on its assumptions, data analysis, before making its final determination for region? And they are the ones that allocate housing and then the regional body, the SCAG, tries to figure it out from there. And so they're calling, they're calling for bills that are going to invoke more transparency. So that's big news for cities, if we can get that done. And SCAG, we also approved $35 million in competitive grant funding to support the regional utilities supporting housing pilot program. I think Torrance might've had a plant, project in there if I remember correctly, but a lot of cities got funding for that. And finally, at the LA City Selection Committee, at the, um, LA County Kenneth Hon Building last week, we voted in, we ratified Paige Caldera, 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 Calderavick? She's got a hard name for us, Calderavick as the Southwest Zone, uh, Blue Ribbon Commission on Homelessness Executive Committee member. And so she's going to be representing all of us, that was a COG initiative to, to endorse her. And, uh, she's from Redondo Beach, so that's good news, we'll have some accountability there. City Attorney, anything on your end?
Nothing at this time, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, City Manager.
Yeah, just a couple of things, Mayor, and follow up to Councilmember Baldino's, um, notice of the Hyperion Citizens Forum that's going to be held Thursday at our library, it's from 6 to 7. Um, they've typically encouraged us, or anyone attending to RSVP in advance. So I would ask that, um, you know, we have all details about the event and how to RSVP on our website under the Hyperion page. Um, and then also, I know, uh, we, we've not doing the updates anymore, but also I wanted to let the folks know that AQMD Hearing Board meeting, uh, will be held on January 24th. Uh, at this meeting, the board will review the status and/or progress on orders of the abatement that they've, they've, they've issued over the, the past year. Uh, and they'll also be discussing complaints, enforcement actions, and if the board should continue to put these cases on the calendar for future meetings or not. So it's an important meeting and, and again, the public can attend in person or via Zoom and all that information's on our Hyperion page. That's it.
Alright, we are adjourned, thank you.